I did just want to briefly mention that if anybody, Shil, I think your audio was a little bit tentative at a couple of moments. We caught most of it, but if anybody wants to be super sure, always feel free to send your testimony in writing. Next, we had Brian Obak from United University Professions.
Yes, hello. My name is Brian Obak and I am a professor of sociology at SUNY New Paltz, also a union member, and I co-chair the Environmental Committee of the United University Professions, the UUP. I have the challenging role of teaching environmental sociology, which examines societal impacts on natural ecosystems. And as much as I love teaching, this is a challenge because the subject matter is so grave and frightening. Young people know the scope of the problems that we face, especially SUNY students, many of whom come from working-class backgrounds that make them among the most vulnerable to climate impacts and other environmental hazards. I've had students left homeless by climate-related extreme weather events. I've had students debilitated by asthma resulting from poor air quality, and every one of them faces an apocalyptic future depending on the actions we take now. So it's on their behalf that I'm here today. The CLCPA is groundbreaking legislation, but there are four major dangers that I would like to emphasize today: funding, enforcement, efficacy, and justice. We know that nothing gets done without resources. The CLCPA needs a robust funding mechanism. I know we have many competing priorities, all of which are important, but this is the meta-issue. If we do not address climate change, none of the good we seek to do through policy, and all that we achieve will be rendered meaningless. The CLCPA needs funding to make it real. Second, enforce it. There should be clear mandates and real penalties and accountability for those who do not meet them. Third, the measures we move forward must be proven effective. Things like carbon capture and green hydrogen are diversionary schemes promoted by a dying fossil fuel industry grasping for ways to prolong their profits. We must go with things like, with truly renewable energy like solar and wind. And lastly, no transition plan will be effective unless it's also just. Low-income and working-class people already suffer the most due to current environmental policies which concentrate hazards in their communities. They must be made a priority as we develop a new green economy. Scenario three is clearly the best option for meeting those goals. Thank you for your consideration and for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to go back now. Someone from Group Eight, we think we've seen online, so Tim Guinea from the New York Climate Reality Project Chapters Coalition. Should be unmuting you momentarily, or you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Okay.
I apologize for being late. I have COVID and I'm sick as a dog, and I may not say anything particularly clear. I want to first thank, I think that this scoping document is quite extraordinary. And the reason I'm on here in the middle of having COVID is because I don't think there's anything more important than dealing with the climate crisis. I am concerned that our building stock is not getting dealt with quickly enough in terms of insulation and electrification. And I'm also concerned that the CLCPA needs to have an educational component, explaining to people why this is important and why we need it. If we don't do that, I don't think we can mandate the public into accepting all of these changes. And we see a kind of extraordinary amount of disinformation which is being put out by the fossil fuel industry, who I'm sure would love to see the CLCPA fail. And we see it, sadly, from Con Edison and other utility companies. And it's what the stuff they're putting out is completely specious, but I don't think that matters. And so it's important that the public has the real facts. So that's what I want to say, and I thank you. I'm going back to bed.
All right, thanks, Tim. I hope that you feel better. All right, next, we have, we're going to come back down to finish, I think we've just finished Group 10, and now launch into Group 11. So Mary Ann Crasney, the Climate Reality Finger Lakes Elder Climate Action, Climate Action Now, is the affiliation. So, Mary Ann, to you.
Thank you. Thanks for the introduction. So all I have to add is that I'm from Ithaca, New York, and I'm also a professor at Cornell University in the Department of Natural Resources and the Environment, but my comments really are more from my role as a citizen. Although, like Brian Obak, who spoke a couple of minutes ago, all the undergraduates that I encounter today have had some sort of experience with climate disasters, whether floods, heat waves, or droughts. It's rather alarming to talk to young people who have had to deal with these issues. So I wanted to thank the council and everybody who's put so much work into this. I think it's really great that New York's going to be out ahead of our other states. And my comments have mostly to do with the importance of considering food solutions in the plan. In particular, I support any initiatives to reduce food waste, including funding for food donation programs and policies that would address the bad practices entailed in best-used-by dates and similar labeling. I recently went on a dumpster diving expedition to those grocery stores in the middle of the night, and I was really shocked by the amount of perfectly good food that my sons, my co-conspirators, and I were able to recover, much of which I think was thrown out simply because it was beyond its best-use-by date, but it was still perfectly good. We had a great feast. And I also volunteered with Friendship Donations Network, which is a food donations program, and was similarly, but perhaps more positively appalled by the amount of food that Wegmans was able, was not able to sell, but they were able to donate. And then just through my role at Cornell, I see that these large institutions or large places where a lot of people eat, like the Cornell Dorms and fraternities and sororities, the only way that they're able to donate their large amount of edible but leftover food is through student volunteers, which is not a great way to do it. So, looks like I'm almost out of time, but the UK has a great food waste campaign directed at consumers, which is also something one might want to consider, and it's called the Love Food Hate Waste Campaign. So, thank you so much for all your work and for sitting through these long meetings.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Great, moving through Group 11. We're not seeing Judith McGuire, not seeing you under that name at the moment. We're going to go to Heather Stanton from Chamon County's Mothers Out Front. Over to you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Heather Stanton, and I'm the team coordinator for Chamon County Mothers Out Front. I have a 22-year-old son and an 18-year-old son, and my children know what is in store for them with regard to climate change within their lifetimes. My older son has taken a science class on climate change at the university at Buffalo. This past December, I found him lying on his bed, looking very depressed. "The Earth is dying", he said. What could I say to him? So far, there's hardly any comfort to offer, so little progress has been made. Of course, the Earth is not literally dying, but the livable climate we need to support our very survival is in mortal peril, and so, and more so with every passing day. How can we let this happen to our children or even to ourselves in our golden years? I know that people who work in the fossil fuel industry are concerned about their jobs. My younger son has several friends who work at a gas station, so I completely support workforce development for green jobs and renewables, especially for former fossil fuel workers. But I will also say that none of us are safe in our jobs if continuous severe weather events are repeatedly destroying our agriculture and food supply, our property and our economy, and an acidic ocean is killing off our seafood. And so I agree, we need a clear moratorium on new fossil fuel plants, clear deadlines for phasing out fossil fuels and procuring renewables, a 2024 mandate for all-electric new building construction, and a significant investment in getting existing homes off fossil fuels. We cannot solve this problem and meet our CLCPA mandate without stopping the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure from pipelines to power plants. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Next, we have Deborah Sprague. Deborah Sprague, you can unmute yourself. There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Deborah Sprague, and I live in Anadaga County. I am heartened to see the detailed vision for sustainability across all domains in the scoping plan. I, however, am distressed by our politicians lacking the will to adequately fund this vision. My son and I went to Albany with New York Renew's to advocate for $15 billion to fund the CLCPA, but we all know the woefully inadequate funding that was passed in our current budget. That's why today I'd like to speak to Chapter 17, the Economy-Wide Strategies. As a member of Citizens Climate Lobby, I urge the adoption of the Carbon Fee and Dividend Program. Because of our political climate, it is the most politically durable option of the three presented in the draft scoping plan, and the most effective at drawing down carbon across all sectors. And this option would also protect low- and middle-income families because the dividend would help them offset the greater costs in energy. Carbon pricing must be system-wide. The RGGI, as it only applies to the electricity sector, is not enough. Finally, regarding the building, heating, and cooling in Chapter 12, I received an email from National Grid regarding their sustainability plan for using renewable natural gas and green hydrogen as a way to protect low-income homes from rising energy costs. I can see how green hydrogen is useful in aviation and maybe some business applications, but residential can and must be transitioned to clean heat pump technology. So I support full electrification of new construction and retrofitting of old residential properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Deborah. All right, moving ahead, Laura O'Brien from Stop the Top, New York, New Jersey.
Hi, good morning. My name is Laura O'Brien. I represent Stop the Top, New York, New Jersey, a nonprofit grassroots organization dedicated to banning nonessential helicopters over the New York metropolitan area. Nonessential helicopters is defined by the federal Improving Helicopter Safety Bill introduced by Congress members Maloney, Nadler, and Blockes, our commuter charter tourist sightseeing helicopters. We are testifying to encourage you to include the environmental and health issues caused by these nonessential helicopters in the draft scoping for the following reasons. Currently, there are more than 10,000 nonessential helicopter flights in and out of three New York City heliports, all concentrated within three miles in Manhattan. They operate either sightseeing trips or commuter flights to New York City's three airports or vacation destinations like the Hamptons. These fossil fuel guzzling helicopters dump tons of toxic helicopter emissions, as they are one of the most polluting, carbon-intensive modes of transport. Each helicopter produces 950 pounds of CO2 per hour and burns 40 times the fuel of a passenger car per hour. Many of these helicopters still burn leaded fuel banned by the EPA 25 years ago and proven to have detrimental impacts on children's brains and nervous systems. According to the FAA, leaded aviation fuel makes up the largest aggregate source of lead emissions to the air in the United States. Even nonessential helicopters are a significant source of air pollution. Small airborne particulates emitted by piston engines have long been known to impact respiratory and cardiovascular function. Exposures increase the cumulative risk of chronic disease and death. These adverse effects of pollutants fall especially hard on people living in environmental justice, neighborhoods, as evidenced by the higher rates of childhood asthma, even premature death due to environmental factors. Noise pollution is also an environmental public health threat referred to as the new second-hand smoke. Given that New York is facing threats of even more climate change caused by catastrophes, Hurricane Ida, Sandy, every source of New York transportation pollution must be held to a new and urgent environmental standard. If New York is serious about decarbonization, the final scoping plan must be focused on reliable, sustainable mass transport for all. It must include a ban on carbon-intensive helicopter transport being used for the privileged 1% at the expense of every New Yorker and our environment. To allow these fossil fuels guzzling helicopters with commuter joyride that could easily be done by less polluting modes of transportation is an injustice to all New Yorkers, and especially those less privileged flyover communities who suffer these harms disproportionately.
So sorry, Laura, to interrupt, but just to be fair to everyone else, we are significantly over the two minutes. Thank you so much for your testimony, and if there's additional material that you didn't get to, absolutely please submit in writing, which is given definitely equal weight to oral. So thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Allison Irwin, who's joined by phone. So Allison, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak now.
Can you hear me?
We can. All right.
Oh, good. I wasn't sure how to unmute myself if I could.
There you are.
Thank you. Thank you for having the phone option, by the way. I couldn't actually join via WebEx, so I appreciate that you had the phone option. So I live in Ulster County. I'm two hours north of New York City. I'm in a very rural area, and I have concerns about making the move to total electricity and getting rid of oil and gas and propane and especially my wood stove. I listened to the March meeting of the CAC. You had it online, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to say to the women that do the meeting, do a really good job of running the meeting, by the way. I listened to about an hour and a half of it, and I listened to a man about an hour and 20 minutes in say something that caught my attention, is that, that an hour and 20 minutes in, they had not really talked about reliability. And my concern is that it's really good to be doing this, and it's good to have measurable goals and goals that are supposed to be met, but they have to be able to be met, and I don't think that right now they're going to be met. I don't, it's very scary to me. First of all, electricity in our area is very expensive. We have Central Hudson, and there've been lots of meetings about, you know, the expensive electric lately. The prices are up. I think they actually are out of Canada. Someone said that prices for electric are locally controlled. I don't really think that's true. Number two, we lose power a lot. We had a huge, huge ice storm in February, and people lost power for days. And if we did not have our wood stove, I do not know how we would have survived. If my friend didn't have her whole house propane-generated generator, I don't know how she would have survived. People cannot. We would have had no electricity for days. Some people had it for, like, didn't have it for a week. How, how will we do things if that is true? How will we live through this? I heard people saying, you know, if people are losing their homes because they can't afford this, or, we won't be able to afford our electric bills if we don't have other options to supplement that. And...
And Allison, just, I know you can't see the 30-second warning. You're a few seconds over two minutes, if you just want to take a couple of seconds to wrap up your comments.
Oh, sorry. It goes so fast, right?
Yes.
I just want to, first of all, the, the things that they're talking about, you know, reliability, I just saw on the news that the, there were turbines near the throughway that didn't work because they didn't ever do the investigation to see if wind shear was going to affect them, and they didn't work. And I'm just saying, well, also the thing about California cutting 90,000 acres of trees just to have some solar panels, I just want people to be looking at things with lots of experts and taking really good care because it's very scary to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Brady Ferguson, and we are moving through Group 12 here, just to queue anyone else. Brady Ferguson?
We can see you. Good morning, members of the Climate Action Council. I support the CLCPA and the draft scoping plan, and I urge you today to push for a swift transition to a clean energy economy. Now, I've heard concerns about potential job losses from this transition, and it makes me think about what happened here in Rochester with Kodak. My mom used to work for Kodak. My uncle used to work for Kodak. Pretty much everyone here knows someone that used to work for Kodak, and hardly anyone knows somebody that still works for Kodak. Kodak's decline caused a lot of people to lose their jobs. However, it would have been wrong for Kodak to keep dumping chemicals into our Genesee River because it might have saved some jobs. It would have been wrong for Kodak to keep burning so much coal that people had to wait half an hour for the train carrying all that coal to pass. And it was wrong for Kodak to expect people to keep taking photos using film when it became so much easier to take them digitally. Kodak had the power to transition from film to digital photography, but it chose not to do so. So the problem was not that we did not perpetuate an industry that had been successful in the past. The problem was that we refused to embrace the wave of the future. Now, today, we're talking about something different, a different situation, but the same principle applies. I want our state to be a leader in a global transition to a clean energy economy, and I know what can happen if we refuse to embrace change. Members of the Climate Action Council, I don't want us to have to tell our families, our friends, our children that we dragged our feet when we had the power to pick up the pace. I urge you to do all that is in your power to ensure a swift transition to a clean energy economy.
Thank you very much, Brady Ferguson. Next, we have Sean Flannery.
Good morning. I'm actually, I'm Sean Flannery. I'm an optics manufacturer technician outside Rochester work, Rochester, New York. I actually took time out of my workday here to testify. This is the first hearing I've ever attended. Thank you for your time, insights, and hard work in developing this draft. I support Scenario Number Three and will comment on four plan features that are fatally inadequate if a transformative plan is going to be successful in any meaningful way. Number one, it must begin with the end in mind. The IPCC standards for reduction have to be surpassed by New York State. For example, 40% emission reduction from 1990 to 2030 is woefully inadequate benchmark. Our region contributes more, so it is responsible for reducing more. Our region is further into the transition process, and our early steps prepared the way and will facilitate our rapid transition. Our state has more financial resources and legislative support than almost any other for this transition. Our state will be viewed as a leader by the rest of the country, in part because of our regional diversity with socioeconomic challenges shared with almost every state. Number two, the most urgent need for your New York State into this transition must be a massive public outreach campaign. If we don't reach out to every New Yorker with a strategic communication campaign, our efforts will likely fall flat. Enlist, I urge you to enlist and train a virtual army of New Yorkers to be communicators, liaisons, scientists, engineers, and social workers, financial advisors, public health workers, and get them employed exclusively in this public education campaign to inform and help transition to a sustainable homes and economies. We need strategic outreach to individuals and communities where they gather, strategic outreach to businesses, to guide them to funding and help them plan their transition, and to skillfully address, sorry, the, I urge you to wisely reject the misguided and disingenuous foot-dragging efforts by energy industry, energy industry representatives, chambers of commerce, and under-informed and short-sighted businesses. Their diversionary talking points ignore the core feature of our climate emergency that our window for preserving a livable, recognizable world is rapidly closing.
Thank you. Was someone, was Coach Harris, were you about to say something?
No, I was not. Thank you.
Okay. I misheard a background noise then. All right. Thank you, Sean Flannery. I'll note our final person from Group 12, Laura Varachi from New York Renew's. We weren't seeing you on under the name you registered with. Same with the first person under Group 13, Michael Kenyon from MK Beauty. So I'm going to call on Richard Cotting, and also note that after Richard, my colleague Jenny Cox will take over as moderating for a period. So Richard Cotting, who notes retired teacher as affiliation. Richard, over to you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a resident of state New York and a former educator, so I'm concerned about that issue. I've been concerned, though, about our environment since I was very young. I remember hearing my mother say that our respiratory illness was due in part to our environment. You see, we live next to a major factory complex where my father worked for 44 years. The work gave us economic security, but also a good deal of air pollution from the factory smokestacks. Even today, with the complex turned into a multi-industrial park, I still must clean the black dust from my porch every spring. I decided to take direct action after I attended a four-week seminar on La Douto, La Douto Sea, and Thicco, written by Pope Francis. That was in 2015. We read, reflected, and wrote responses to his call of the cry of the poor and the cry of our earth. I knew then I must act to reduce carbon footprint, slow global warming, and act to create a healthier, cleaner environment for my children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. The CLCPA of New York State is a significant plan to lead New York State and the country on an adventure to create a clean energy economy for all. The scoping plan outlines specific ways to transition to clean renewable energy and create many clean energy jobs that focus on the marginalized communities, and assist all presently in carbon fuel jobs to find clean energy jobs. There should be no false solutions offered by the carbon fuel companies, only honest discourse on the plan toward using wind, solar, and geothermal energy to change our focus from carbon fuel to clean, sustainable energy. Please fund, implement, and implement the CLCPA, and please listen. You may hear the cry of the poor and the cry of the earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Hello, everyone. I'm Jenny Cox. I'm glad to be here moderating and taking over from Farah. Next, we do have Ross Pinkerton, but I do want to note that we are not seeing Brandon Medina. Brandon, if you're on, just email us to let us know that you're on. Ross, take it away.
Hi, thank you. I'm a high school physics and climate science teacher, and researching for my course has taught me that nothing is without disadvantages, but that climate change has the largest costs, and fossil fuel use is accompanied with the largest other negative effects as well, like pollution. So we need to reduce our emissions as quickly as possible, and as other people have noted, we should aspire to meeting IPCC goals, but even faster reduction would help balance areas that won't meet them, and just missing them is incrementally better than missing them by more. So the best we can do, we should aim for, and then if we fall a little bit short, we're still better off than if we don't try. I also think strongly that greater upfront cost should be acceptable, as the state is in good shape budget-wise, and there's a budget to tap. We need to help disadvantaged disadvantaged communities and low-income owners and renters, as we've heard, to manage these costs, but we shouldn't shy away from major investments because they'll save us both fuel costs in the long run and other costs of climate change and pollution in the future, which are already overshadowing the costs of the transition that we could actually put forth. I do think because everything is more complicated than we would like it to be, we should remain open to nuclear power where it's open to nuclear power where it's cheaper or more reliable, or to supplement the renewables that we need to build. And at a minimum, working nuclear power plants should be kept online while safe, as Indian Point most likely was, and we saw an uptick in natural gas power when that went offline. We should continue to research green hydrogen for future use and for storage, but we shouldn't currently rely on expanding fossil fuel infrastructure or build now for national grids hypothetical future non-fossil gas, because all it's really going to mean is making it easier for us to continue to burn current natural gas, which has many problems. And so I support your push for electric buildings as soon as possible. Replacing gas appliances is much harder than building buildings to accommodate electric appliances right from the start, and so we should help support conversions as well, as much as we can. Thank you for your work, and keep it up.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, we are now going to move to Group Fourteen, and I do just want to start off by saying we're missing a number of folks from this group. Melissa Hoffman, Camila Jacob, Tony Otello, and Susan Chappell. We do not see you on this list, so if you are on, please email us so we can get you queued up. We will turn it to Livvy Mann, who is from Rise and Resist. Livvy, are you on?
To get on, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. This is an interface I'm not used to, sorry. Yeah, I'm setting aside my written testimony as I've been listening to the wonderful people who've been testifying so far this morning. I just want to address, first of all, coming to this meeting, I have in mind my three-year-old granddaughter, Matilda. I'm quite old. I don't expect to feel the effects of foot-dragging in the world of climate mitigation. I expect her to maybe be a climate refugee. That terrifies me. This is a horrifying thought, and I feel that in light of that, that urgency is the most important thing with regard to this. I think that the, all of the issues that other people have mentioned, the idea of climate justice, the idea of exceeding the IPCC expectations, the Paris expectations, are really important, but I most want to talk about the idea of the disinformation that we're dealing with right now. I think there's a sense that, you know, where are we going to get the money? New York State is one of the, if not the wealthiest state in the Union. The money is here. It's just a matter of whether we choose to spend it on this crucial issue or not. The other issue of disinformation is what's coming from the corporate world, what we're hearing, the greenwashing we're hearing from investors like JP Morgan Chase and Citibank and from the oil companies. There's just, there has to be a separation between what the government can do from, from the fossil fuel industry and the fossil fuel industry investors. So I think that the moves to get pension funds out of fossil fuels is really brilliant, but there's got to be a much stronger effort to make this problem as big as it is and to put the kind of money behind it that's really, really needed, taxing the rich, doing whatever's necessary to make a just transition to genuinely renewable fuels, none of the false solutions that we've been hearing about. Sorry, this is a little inarticulate, but I just was kind of moved to, to speak this way. So yes, Scenario Three, to my mind, is the best route forward, and it must be done with...
Thank you, Livvy. We are a number of seconds over your two minutes, but I encourage you to...
Can I say one thing, please? I had, I had to email two friends to get the link to get on here. I know other people never receive the email, so that may be part of why you're not seeing people on the call.
Okay, thank you so much. We will perhaps send out another email with the link. Thank you, Livvy. Okay, we will move to Group Fifteen. As of right now, we do not have Leguardo Marquin on. If you are on and we're not seeing your name, please email us, but we will move to Sandra Radoff from Rise and Resist. Sandra?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. I'm Sandra Radoff. I'm a mother, daughter, wife, and activist with Rise and Resist, and I live in New York City. And I saw a really scary statistic recently put out by the Pew Center for Research. Close to half of adults eighteen to forty-nine say they are unlikely or not too likely to have children, and that's up from more than a third in 2018. My twenty-nine-year-old daughter is among them, and it breaks my heart, not just because I'd love to have grandchildren, but because my daughter may not have the experience of being a mother, which has been one of the most meaningful roles of my life. And climate change is one of the most significant factors driving this trend towards childlessness. One thirty-nine-year-old English teacher put it this way, "I refuse to bring children into the burning hellscape we call a planet." And our own AOC wrote recently, basically, there's a scientific consensus that the lives of children are going to be very difficult, and it does lead, I think, young people to have a legitimate question, is it still okay to have children? In July 2019, New York passed the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which represented the most ambitious and comprehensive climate and clean energy legislation in the country. This is something to be applauded and puts New York State in a real leadership position. But here we are, almost three years later, and this amazing bill is still largely unfunded and consequently has no teeth. This is why we are here today, to say to those of power who represented us that we want this legislation to be more than a piece of paper. We want this legislation to have a dedicated funding mechanism, and we want this legislation to put environmental justice, public health, and a just transition first. I advocate for New York Renew's Scenario Three. I want the next generation to inherit a planet worth living, and I want to see New York State lead the way. Thank you for this opportunity as a citizen to weigh in.
Thank you, Sandra. We are missing Macaulay Fisher. You are up next, so if you are on, please email us. We will move to Laura Falk, who is from the Climate Reality Project, Capital Region, New York Chapter.
Thank you for your time this morning. I'm Laura Falk, and I am the co-chair of Climate Reality's Capital Region Chapter. Recent reports from the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which reflect overwhelming scientific consensus, amount to what the UN Secretary General described as a code red for humanity. He went on to say that inclusive and green economies, prosperity, cleaner air, and better health are possible for all if we respond to this crisis with solidarity and with courage. I'm here today to ask the Climate Action Council to heed this call by implementing a scoping plan that will chart a course for a rapid and equitable shift away from fossil fuels. Affordable and proven all-electric solutions to replace fossil fuels in buildings and transportation powered by a clean renewable grid would reduce greenhouse gas emissions, create good-paying jobs, as noted in the jobs study for the scoping plan, improve the health of New Yorkers, and avoid an estimated fifty to one hundred and twenty billion dollars in healthcare costs by 2050. Regulations that ensure a continual decline in greenhouse gas emissions from power plants, along with a ban on new fossil fuel infrastructure, must be in the scoping plan. Retirement of fossil fuel-fired infrastructure, whose emissions disproportionately harm disadvantaged communities, such as the gas boilers in the Sheridan Hollow neighborhood of Albany, should be prioritized. Legislation to transition the capital complex to one hundred percent renewable energy in three years has been introduced and should be enacted. We have the solutions at hand. For the health and viability of current and future generations, the scoping plan must establish an effective, well-funded, equitable, and rapid path to zero emissions. Please don't let the fossil fuel industry and for-profit utilities delay or dilute the plan. If anything, it needs to be strengthened. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Laura. Noting that we are up to Henry Williams in Group Fifteen. He is with Cornell University. We do not see you online, so if you are on, please email us at nys.cac@cadmusgroup.com. All right, we will move to Group Sixteen, and first up is Susan Hughes-Smith with Monroe County.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Great. Thank you, members of the Climate Action Council, for your service to the people of the state of New York and for receiving testimony today. Susan Hughes-Smith, mom, professor of public health and of environmental studies. I've spent the last fifteen years advocating for climate solutions at the local, state, and federal level, co-founding a not-for-profit for climate action and a small business to facilitate the implementation of one hundred percent renewable community choice aggregation programs, now serving over sixty thousand people in the greater Rochester area. I'm vice chair of Monroe County's Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee and serve as a member of the county legislature for District Fourteen. I want to take a couple of seconds just to speak to some information that other speakers were bringing forward. Texas is not New York. Texas did not regulate properly and require the gas infrastructure to be insulated, leaving pumps and pipes to freeze in their cold snap, unable to deliver gas to the power facilities that supply more than fifty percent of the state's electricity. Furthermore, their grid is not connected to other grid regions in the country, so they are unable to import electricity, so wholly unacceptable that they allowed folks in their country, in their state, to pass away. Intermittency will also be an issue, but it is not currently an issue, and it should not be used as a way to avoid taking action. There are two US grid regions now that have more than thirty percent wind and three more that have more than twenty percent wind. New York upstate is at five percent, and there's nothing in the rest of the state. So let's not follow false solutions. Let's follow a path that leads to the swift and effective action based on science and math, and math favors electrification. In fact, if we look at primary energy consumption, if we switched off of fossil fuels directly to efficient electric technologies, we would, as a society, need less energy overall. The idea of using renewables to create hydrogen to then combust just is absolutely mathematically insane. So we should not follow these sorts of false solutions. Please follow Scenario Three with low to no bioenergy or hydrogen combustion, and I will submit the rest of my remarks in writing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, next, we have Arden Down, but we are not seeing you on, so if you are on, please email us. We will move to Sarah Richardson. Sarah, are you on?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Richardson. I live on the Lower East Side of Manhattan. Thanks for the opportunity to offer testimony today. I'm here with advocacy efforts of New York Renews. Extreme weather events caused by climate change have directly affected my community. After Superstorm Sandy, we lost hundreds of trees in neighboring East River Park, the only meaningful green space of size in this densely populated area of about a hundred and fifty thousand people. Now, the park is being demolished, eventually to be rebuilt to anticipate rising sea levels. Pollution caused by burning fossil fuels has also impacted the health of my neighborhood. We know asthma rates are higher among communities of color and low-income communities. My neighborhood is both. The CLCPA promised to address climate change while correcting its immediate and long-term effects on the lives of New Yorkers like me and my neighbors. That's why the CLCPA must set clear year-by-year targets for replacing fossil fuels with renewable sources built for our communities. We need to guarantee these targets will be met using proven renewable energy technologies like solar and wind. The council put forth three scenarios for our climate future. Of these, I advocate for Scenario Three, low to no bioenergy and hydrogen combustion, and the simultaneous acceleration of electrification of buildings and transportation. New York must establish a dedicated funding mechanism by legislation, if needed, to ensure reductions of both greenhouse gas and co-pollutant emissions. And the scoping plan, finally, must ensure that the mandates put forth by the council are legally enforceable against industries and include timelines for the reduction of emissions by sector. Provisions for environmental justice and emission reduction are not meaningful if they cannot be enforced, or if there aren't rules in place for what happens when climate justice laws are broken. Thanks for your time today, and again, I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Sarah. We are still on Group Sixteen, and we have two folks who seem to be missing, Connor Allen and Lucy Proshansky. If you guys are on, please send us an email, and we will get you teed up. We will now move to Group Seventeen, and we are missing Nicholas Kenworthy from the Veggie Nuggets. If you are on, also, please email us. But we will now move to Emmeline Koster, who is an adjunct professor, marine, earth, and atmospheric sciences from North Carolina State University. Emmeline, are you on?
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you for this opportunity. As a geologist, I'm going to provide three macro considerations that I feel are repeatedly missing from discussions like this one on climate policy mitigation. The geologist in me makes me want to urge that your discussions need to recognize and act accordingly with the fact that climate has always changed, and it has simply been changing more frequently and with more consequences, particularly with so much population having occupied near-coastal areas that are subject to inundation. Secondly, the atmosphere, we need to recognize, is an interdependent part of the Earth system, particularly as it relates to, for example, matters of pandemics. There's so much discussion out there that relates the vulnerability of populations to climate change with respect to the pandemic. And thirdly, I'd urge that you enter into this discussion the voice of young women in particular, with a sort of a triple bottom line, planet, people, and profit motivation. There's a new paper out by Gail Kimball that makes clear that the majority of activists about climate change policy are young women. Greta Thunberg from Sweden is maybe the most notable example, but over two-thirds of the activists in the world on climate change are firstborn women. They are communicative, they are feminist, they are determined, they are passionate, and they are caring. And I think the voices I hear, without making any grandiose assumptions, are not those very much of young women, and I think you're missing a key stakeholder group that can help to sharpen the policy decisions and considerations you're making. So thank you for this opportunity to contribute. I do this both with a geological view and having been the CEO of four major nature and science museums in North America. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Kevin Costa, we do not see you on. If you are, please email us. We will move to Marta Schaff. Marta, are you on?
I'm on.
Great.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name's Marta Schaff. I'm a parent with a doctorate in public health, and I'm a member of the New York City Climate Families Coalition. I appreciate the chance to provide virtual testimony. I was unable to attend in person as I have COVID as well. I'm calling from Brooklyn, New York. I am extremely concerned about climate change, and I worked very hard in 2018 to elect state senators and assembly members who would pass the robust climate change legislation the current crisis requires. Indeed, it's clear we are already in the climate crisis, and in New York, we know that poor communities are the most likely to experience the negative impacts of climate change, as well as the negative health impacts associated with fossil fuel infrastructure. This injustice is global, and I know because I work in global health. I used to live in Burkina Faso, where I saw drought, flash floods, and windstorms drive people from subsistence farming in rural areas, and productive soil turn to sand. The UN estimates that Burkina is losing nine hundred thousand acres of arable land every year. Burkina Faso has contributed virtually nothing to historical emissions. For its part, the United States is the largest contributor to historical emissions. If New York State were its own country, it would be the tenth-largest economy in the world. What we do matters, and that's why I worked so hard to elect a legislature that would pass a strong climate law. Now, we have to make sure that the law is implemented. The scoping plan must ensure that the mandates the Climate Action Council have put forward have the force of law, meaning that they're legally enforceable in cases of violations by industry, and that there are clear timelines attached to emissions reductions targets. As a public health... As a public health professional, I'm particularly concerned about the immediate health impacts of the pollution associated with fossil fuel combustion, as well as the health impacts of a changing climate. As outlined in Scenario 3, any discussion of combustion emissions and combustion waste products should account for the cumulative impact of pollutants on disadvantaged communities. The scoping plan must hold firm to the commitment for zero emissions in the electric sector by 2040 as the health risks associated with renewable power generation are significantly less than any alternative scenario. All of this requires a dedicated funding mechanism to ensure reductions of both greenhouse gas and co-pollutant emissions and to begin the state's large-scale transition to an equitable renewable energy economy. The Climate Action Council is tasked with drafting a plan to realize the goals enshrined in state law. This process should be based on evidence and the will of the voters, not self-interested mendacious talking points that the industry is using to try to limit your power and impact. Thank you for your attention, your work, and again, the opportunity to provide testimony virtually.
Thank you. We are now up to Thomas Herasuna, who is with Climate Reality Finger Lakes Greater Region, New York.
Good afternoon, and thank you for hearing me today. My name is Thomas Herasuna, and I have been a resident of New York for over 40 years. I currently live in the town of Ithaca in Tompkins County. I'm co-chair of the Climate Reality Project Finger Lakes chapter. The latest IPCC report indicates that we must take immediate action to reduce greenhouse gas levels as quickly as possible to have any chance to keep global warming below 1.5 degrees Celsius. Today, I'll cover two sectors: buildings and power generation, which together make a 45% of greenhouse gas emissions in the state. To reduce building sector emissions, we need to phase out natural gas use in buildings and decommission its infrastructure as quickly as possible. The final scoping plan should set a target of 2024 for all electric new construction. We should incentivize building owners to replace their furnaces and natural gas appliances with their electric counterparts before they wear out. In particular, we should eliminate the 100-foot rule and the rule requiring free natural gas hookups on demand, which hides significant real costs in the natural gas infrastructure and add extra costs to consumers' utility bills. With respect to power generation, we must accelerate public awareness and challenge misinformation head-on to increase acceptance of new installations of renewable power generation. We must deliberately reduce -- I beg your pardon? We must deliberately reduce power generation from natural gas and avoid keeping this as a bridge fuel. Natural gas is clearly not a clean energy source and contributes to higher levels of methane emissions, which are even more potent than CO2 in our critical timeframe. Finally, in order to help New York State meet its renewable energy goals, we need to actively discourage energy-intensive practices such as proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining, even using renewable energy. By successfully meeting the CLCPA goals, we will clean up our air and water with a positive effect on overall health and additional benefit of reducing our vulnerability to wild fluctuation of fossil fuel pricing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Thomas. We will be moving to Group 18, and then we have Group 19, and we are noting that some people have joined from earlier groups that we did not see were on earlier. We will get back to you, but we are going to finish Group 18 and Group 19. With Group 18, Nancy Casper from Earth Eden Sanctuary.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. I'm Nancy Casper. I'm a minister here at Earth Eden Sanctuary, a small organic farm. And I, yeah, I'm grateful to be able to comment here. For those not fully aware of our planetary crisis, please take heed. Our house is on fire. 11,000 climate scientists around the world are clearly warning of this climate emergency. You can reference the IPCC report, specifically B.2.1 through B.2.3 on page 14 and B.3.3 on page 15. Also read pages 22 and 23 of this report. Scott Williams, leading contributor to the United Nations Disaster Risk Reduction Report in his interview with Jim Bendel, which you can see on YouTube, states that things, and I quote, "are much, much worse than we imagined." Because of ecosystems destruction, unsustainable agriculture, fisheries, and forestry practices, our Earth's life support system is breaking down. We are in global overshoot, extracting and consuming more than the planet can supply. Human activity is the cause of our current mass species extinction. We have to act now. There's no time for half-measures. We must end the continued clear-cutting and burning of intact forests to produce more industrial crops, destroying natural habitat, soil structure, and microbiome, and releasing the stored carbon that contributes to the global heating and climate disruption. We must end public funding of polluting CAFOs, industrial agriculture, and the cutting of mature forests. We must support forest preservation, diverse reforestation, regenerative organic agriculture, and small and minority farmers who truly know and care for the land. We must drastically reduce fossil fuels and methane emissions and immediately implement true clean renewable energy and carbon sequestration methods in agriculture. We are inextricably interconnected and independent on nature, and if we want to give any kind of livable future to our children, we must give back and restore Earth's capacity to regenerate life. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you. Mary Fineran.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. Hi, my name is Mary Fineran. I live in Cairo, New York, in Green County, the county that recently denounced the CLCPA and the CAC and your work. I think you should protest that. That's one thing I need to say. But I also am going to try to say things that you haven't heard. But I do want to reiterate Miles McManus stressed the need to expedite the CAC timetable and stop using the 1990 measures as a starting comparison point. I don't, anyway. Speaking of delays and enforcement, I believe you really need to look at the delays caused by permitting and bureaucracy regarding infrastructure, especially natural gas. Two current cases in point, the CPV Power Plant in Orange County has been spewing GHD and toxins for over three years over an environmental justice community without an air permit. Things like that cannot be allowed. Also, Greenwich Power Plant and Bitcoin Plant on Seneca Lake has had two extensions on the Title V permit, and it continues to run despite Commissioner Sagos's statement that Greenwich has not shown compliance with New York State's climate law. When there are delays, especially when heavy GHG and toxic emissions are known, and regarding the permitting process, I believe that facilities need to be shut down in the interim while you're looking through over the paperwork. I mentioned at the Albany hearing my dismay regarding the lack of scoping regarding proof-of-work cryptocurrency. It's insanely unsustainable, and please look at that more. I would also like you to look more closely at citing for renewables. I understand the solar industry protests increased expense, and we do need to use some green fields or old farm fields for that. But citing at parking lots and abandoned sites need to be considered more strongly. Take parking lot, put in a solar field, there's your little musical interim. I tear up whenever I see a baby. And also, I teared up when Mr. Carmody was speaking about his mental illness issues regarding climate change. The Times Union has an op-ed yesterday on page 88 by Leah Olnick. I strongly recommend that you read it, and it's not the worst.
You are well over 10 minutes now. Thank you. All right. We will move to Kim Azarelli. We do not see you on, but if you are, please email us. Lorraine Farina from Hudson Valley Air Quality Coalition. Lorraine, are you on? We cannot hear you. We can hear you now, but there is a little bit of feedback.
Try it on the computer, let's see.
We can hear you now. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. This scoping plan is extremely disappointing and derelict given in its omission of any plan to address rapidly becoming the worst public health and environmental threat in New York State.
Lorraine, you might need to mute either your computer or your phone if you're on both. Yeah, it looks like you're on two devices, so mute one of those and talk through the other.
Can you hear me? I'm so sorry.
Yes, but you are.
So I'll pick up where I left off. He acknowledged the negative health effects of poor air quality on disadvantaged communities who suffer inordinately from the effects of air pollution, including asthma, cardiac arrest, stroke, asthma, even premature death. The commissioner is correct, but widely considered the most dangerous pollutant to human health is PM particulate matter 2.5. What this document fails to adequately address is that the health and environmental effects of wood burning have been shown to be worse than those produced by the burning of fossil fuels per unit of mass burned when looking at PM 2.5, and even worse than coal. The document acknowledges Am I still on?
You are.
No, thank you.
Great.
acknowledges that although only 2% of households are estimated to burn wood for heat, the PM 2.5 produced by wood burning is more than that generated by both power and transportation sectors combined. That's a quote from the document. This should set off alarm bells, yet the document proposes no immediate action to combat this threat to public health and the environment. Quote from the document, "Although no strategies target wood combustion specifically, upstate areas experienced benefit from reduced wood combustion due to electrification and energy efficiency." From page 87, biomass and biofuels are burned in New York for heat and combined heat and power for residential, commercial, and industrial sectors, but the residential sector has the greatest use as residents increasingly turn to biomass to heat their homes. As most of the wood smoke pollution emanates from heating and the recreational burning of wood, targeting the electricity sector does not begin to address this type of pollution. The document considers in its health policy, page 56, the serious negative health effects of nitrous oxide, sulfur dioxide, PM 2.5, all of which are produced by wood combustion. There are two logical fallacies in the document's proposal not to act in this regard. Number one, it assumes that heating is the only or even the primary source of wood smoke pollution. In fact, increasing numbers of people in the Northeast, including New York State, in both rural suburban and urban areas are choosing to burn wood, both indoors and out.
Thank you, Lorraine. I encourage you to submit the rest of your comments via online. You are significantly over your 2 minutes.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Vikash Ashoka.
Yes, so it's Vikash Ashoka. I'm with Sunrise Movement and Climate Can't Wait 2022. I live in Beacon, New York. I live right between the Hudson River and Mount Beacon in a community that deeply values care for our neighbors and mutual aid and livable future. But as I look across the river, I see the Dance Gamer Plant right across from me, and that is a symbol of all the interests that prioritize profits over people and extraction over balance. And these are mutually exclusive visions for our present and our future. So my request for you all is to think deeply about which vision for both that you want to see. Local communities can do our best to take care of each other and create resilient communities, but unfortunately, we all will be facing climate chaos, and we can only do so much to maintain clean environments, thriving economies, and healthy homes. We need state leadership like you to fight for us at those higher levels. I've been in lobbying meetings with Democratic state legislators in my area, and many of them are shifting the burden of responsibility to this exact process as a way of shirking their own duty. So unfortunately, our state is relying on you all. Your burden is heavy to make sure that we fund the CLCPA and make the mandates in our scoping plan legally enforceable and follow a rapid timeline. Your duty is too great to gamble our futures on false solutions from the same fossil fuel profiteers that got us into this mess in the first place. Please choose Scenario 3, focus on solar and wind with minimal bioenergy and hydrogen combustion, and rapidly electrify buildings and transportation. Most importantly throughout this process, I hope that you listen first and foremost to the people who are protecting more than their bulging bank accounts, center environmental justice, adjust transition for workers, and indigenous sovereignty in your decision-making and in your hearings. Finally, I just want to thank you for adding the Peak Skill Hearing. I unfortunately can't make it to that one because of work, so I showed up here today, but it means a lot that you all prioritize the needs of the Hudson Valley in this process. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We just have one more person left, but I do want to note that we do have some time left over, so we will be opening the chat function in order to allow people who are on but did not pre-register to speak. If you wish to say a comment, please go ahead and chat in the chat box your name and your affiliated organization so we can get you queued up. All right, we will move to Group 19. Thomas Kanoka, we do not see you on, but if you are, please email us or put your name in the chat. So our last person up is Kimberly Harriman from Utility Consultation Group.
Thank you. I'm making this statement on behalf of the Utility Consultation Group, or the UCG, representing New York's major electric and gas utilities. The UCG was formed in December 2020 to provide expertise to the Climate Action Council and be a resource for its advisory panels. Our companies operate the complex systems that deliver energy our customers need at homes and in their businesses. We are committed to using our significant experience to assist the state in achieving its emissions reduction goals. Given the complexity of energy systems and the transformation required to meet the state's goals, it is imperative that the state's focus beyond the continued provision of safe and reliable energy to our customers. To achieve deep decarbonization while ensuring reliable service requires optimization of energy delivery systems and reliance on a multitude of existing and future energy resources. We recommend keeping all energy options on the table at this early stage of the decarbonization process. Electrifying portions of our energy system that rely on other sources of energy will require additional infrastructure to meet the demands of a cleaner, larger electric network. We should look at the entirety of the energy system to ensure the most cost-effective approach to achievement of CLCPA goals. Gas distribution system must continue to serve customers safely and reliably. In the future, that system can facilitate energy decarbonization by flowing low and no-carbon energy like renewable natural gas and hydrogen. We support robust research initiatives to develop these and other necessary technologies, such as electric storage, carbon capture, and geothermal systems. With our proven track record of emissions reductions and meeting energy delivery needs, we are committed to helping the state meet its climate goals while together ensuring a reliable, safe, cost-effective, clean energy future for our customers. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
We did want to make a brief announcement. This is Farah Anderson, again, co-moderator. Did want to make a brief announcement that we apologize. We seem to have had an error in turning on the recording for the first part of the meeting. So if you're still on and you spoke in the kind of 10:00 AM to about 11:15, 11:20 range, we absolutely heard the feedback. Everyone here has heard it. It's been noted and recorded. But there was an error with the recording, so if you had spoken during that timeframe and wanted to be Um, so if you had spoken during that timeframe and wanted to be um, have your comments sort of posted online for the record um, and, and were missed in that technical glitch from the uh, recording, please do submit your uh, comments in writing, um, as those will all be posted um, after the conclusion of the comment period. Um, so apologies, and again, uh, feel free to submit comments in writing if you are in that block. Um, so we'll continue to circle back to uh, those who have been added in the chats. I'll pass back to Jenny.
Thanks, Farah. Um, okay, so we are going to go in order of received requests, so we are going to start with Elaine Weir.
Hi, uh, thank you for putting together um, this comprehensive scoping plan. Uh, my name is Elaine Weir, and I live in Westchester County. And we really need to go the um, fastest path uh, to, to address this climate change. So I believe that is scenario three that you have. Um, you know, we have to reduce the pollution, um, and it's causing a lot of health problems to New Yorkers, but also the climate change. My daughter suffers from asthma, so to reduce our own household pollution, we installed geothermal for heating and cooling, and it's actually saving us money. Our purpose wasn't to save money. Our purpose was to clean the air, but it's actually saving us money. So I really think we need to um, have all new construction in New York State. Do uh, do the um, all-electric with the heat pumps, the geothermal, whatever. It works. It saves money. Um, so we should, we should start that by 2024, no later, for all new buildings. Um, also, um, the renewables work too, because I, I visited Scotland, and we went to the largest, they're one of their largest wind uh, farms, and uh, it was absolutely beautiful. Um, they made it into a park. Anybody could use it. They had a refreshment stand there. It was just a wonderful day trip. Um, uh, Scotland, by the way, produces enough electricity to supply just about their whole country's needs. However, they export a lot of it so that they're still using other, other means. Um, so anyway, I really, oh, I'm almost done. Um, I really encourage us to do the strongest thing possible to get us off of these fossil fuels, and thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Thank you, Elaine. Um, I just want to do one more call. If you are on and did not pre-register but would like to speak, uh, please chat. Um, it is in the bottom right-hand corner where you can chat the host and provide your name and affiliated organization. Uh, we are, we have Margaret Perkins from 350 NYC. Margaret?
Okay.
Do you hear me?
We can hear, we can hear you now.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Margaret Perkins. I belong to 350 NYC, and I just briefly want to highlight the issue of refrigerants, hydrofluorocarbons and their management in the transition of fossil fuels. Uh, an intrinsic part of the transition uh, is the installation of heat pumps. It is estimated that by 2030, New York State will have installed over a million heat pumps in homes, residences. But heat pumps also use hydrofluorocarbons as the refrigerant. Before this massive and costly transition accelerates, we would hope that the heat pumps are available that contain alternatives to hydrofluorocarbons. Such pumps are available on the European residential markets. I would like to suggest to NYSERDA that it launches a, a challenge program as it has with multifamily heat pumps, that they also um, look for heat pumps that contain alternatives to hydrofluorocarbons, and they do exist. Uh, other regulations that should be taken into account with as far, as far as uh, heat pumps is to account for hydrofluorocarbons in building codes and efficiency standards, and that we uh, transition away from the high global warming potential hydrofluorocarbons that are now on the market. As you all know, these have global warming potential up to 3,000 times uh, carbon dioxide. Um, there are some now available, R600 is available uh, even at Home Depot. So we should promote those appliances. Uh, well, that's refrigerators, uh, not heat pumps, but we, we should be able to get heat pumps in the market soon that have alternatives to HFCs. Um, and we should transition away from the high global warming potential HFCs in other appliances according to the SNAP rules and the Kigali Amendment, which it looks like uh, the United States is finally going to ratify. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Um, okay, we do not see any more chats, um, but we will give it another couple of minutes before we start to close out in case, um, there are some people who would still like to chat.
Can you hear people or do you have to unmute us?
Uh, the host can see the chat, and then we have to elevate them, and then they can unmute themselves. So yes.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question about submitting written comments?
Sure, I think a clarification about submission is welcome.
Okay, uh, my question is, uh, if we submit written comments and want to provide a citation, is this site of a document like the IP, the North America section of the IPCC report or other matters like that that are lengthy, is a, just a citation, okay? Or do we need to copy and paste the whole 50 pages into the written record? Thank you.
Um, I will ask if our uh, state council leadership would like to weigh in on that. Um, I, my guess is that if you point to the, the reference that you're talking about, um, that, 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 that works, um, but I will ask our council leadership to confirm.
Yes, that, that'd certainly be fine. A citation would be adequate. Thank you for the question. I personally welcome all citations.
Great. All right, we'll just give it a minute here.
All right, um, I see the question as to the link for written comments. Is it possible, do we have a hyperlink in the slide that we could share?
Yes, I believe it is in actually our closing remarks, um, which is a good segue. Um, if you could advance the slides. Great. Um, so this public hearing event has come to an end, uh, but the public comment period will remain open until June 10th, 2022. Uh, we want to thank you so much for attending today's hearing and for providing feedback on the Climate Action Council's draft scoping plan. I will pass to Sarah to provide some final closing remarks, which will include how you can submit and the hyperlink, um, and how to continue sharing your feedback with the Climate Action Council. Sarah? And if you could advance the slides. Great, thank you.
Great, thank you, Jenny. Um, so first, um, I just want to also mention that, um, there's another comment period that is open. It's um, on the draft criteria that's been developed by the Climate Justice Working Group for identifying disadvantaged communities. Uh, this was released in March and um, is currently in a public comment period through July 7th. Uh, they've also released um, a number of, of hearings that will be conducted um, May through June. Um, and so I encourage you to visit, visit the Climate Act website to learn more about those disadvantaged communities criteria, um, comment periods uh, and hearing. And then finally here, um, just another um, reminder of the opportunities to comment on the draft scoping plan. Uh, we have three more hearings coming up next week. Um, however, the, the comment period is open through June 10th, and so you can take, uh, you can submit written comment through a comment form um, at the um, at the Climate Act website. Um, you can submit it uh, also via email to scopingplan@nyserta.ny.gov, and you can also do it through um, US mail sent to NYSERDA offices with uh, attention to the draft scoping plan. Um, and as I mentioned before, but I'll just say it again for good measure, uh, the comment period is open through June 10th, uh, 2022, and all comments that are um, received in, during the comment period will be considered by the council as it develops its final scoping plan by the end of the year. And with that, um, I'll just thank you for your interest um, in the draft scoping plan and for participating today. Um, and uh, I think we'll close out the hearing now. Uh, Dorian, I'll just ask if you um, have any closing remarks here that you'd like to make.
No, I would, I would just join you in thanking everyone for participating to the members, um, for your uh, for your attendance and attention, and um, certainly looking forward to the remainder of this comment period, including the hearings this week, including another virtual hearing, as, as mentioned. Um, we are certainly learning a lot, um, and, and really appreciative of everyone's engagement. So I hope everyone has a great weekend, and um, we will be seeing you soon.